This is the agenda of the Board of Trustees, Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois. Today is January twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. I will ask the clerk to take the role, please.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner? Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Plumb as present, trustee Greer, please lead us in the direction.
To the flag, our brothers stand. To the public, for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Are there any approval or corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that was held on January ninth, two thousand and eighteen? Any corrections to be made? If there are no corrections to be made, I will therefore motion to approve the minutes of June the ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Cap, in a second. Second by trustee Claybrook, let's try to take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Before we open this session up to the public, if you would give us your name and your view for best in the board, and please keep your comments clear in the meeting while we're being held at the office for three minutes. I would ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
I'll make the motion to open the meeting to the public.
A motion to propose our trustee Richardson to open the meeting to the public, in a second. Second by trustee Garcia, will the clerk take the role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed, the meeting is now open to the public, we'll start on this side. We don't want to have anything to say on this side?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
How long have you been trustee in Burnham?
Since two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine? Are you generally aware of what's going to be voted on when you, before you guys come here, a day or two or a week or?
Yes, usually get the agenda like forty-eight hours before.
Were you aware that the ordinance was going to be, all these ordinances were going to be voted on on November fourteenth? The water and the sewer ordinance?
Hey sir, I think the position is that according to the attorney, if you have a comment, you can make a comment, but you can't interrogate it, is that correct?
Oh, no, no, I'm not interrogating.
Sir, the issue is whether or not you're questioning a trustee. You can talk to a trustee if you wish, and he wishes to talk to you after the meeting. Right now, it's for public comments, not questions.
We can't ask any questions to anybody?
You can ask him after the meeting, but during the meeting, you can make a public comment. A public comment is a statement, not a question.
How are we to find out information if we don't ask questions?
Well, you can take it and inquire of the trustees if you wish after a meeting, but the meeting must proceed with public comments first, not interrogation or questions.
This wasn't interrogating. I just want to know, were you, were you aware of?
Sorry, you're asking questions. If you wish to make a public comment, you can make a public comment.
Trustee?
If you want to talk to the trustee and ask him questions, now is not the time.
Trustee Claybrook, would you mind if I asked you questions?
Excuse me, may I please, just for the record, have her name?
John Heiduk, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I've been coming to three meetings now, and everybody's been opening today, tonight, we can't ask any questions anymore?
I'm telling you right now, the law, I had to research it, it's very clear. You can make a public comment, but you cannot ask the trustee's questions.
There isn't a law.
Right now.
It's subjective.
I don't.
Do you understand?
No, I don't.
There isn't a law, John, it's subjective.
What I don't understand is, it's been going on for so long now, and tonight...
They were the statement to allow people to ask questions.
So that shuts us up?
Right, that's exactly right.
No, it doesn't shut you up.
I can't, I'm trying to educate myself.
I'm not going to argue with you, so.
No, I'm trying to educate myself.
Look at the Illinois state statutes. If you wish to make a public comment.
Is that what, this is what this is come to, I gotta look at the statute.
And if you make a comment, and then the trustee can respond.
It's not in the Illinois state statute. He's lying down.
He just said you can make a comment, and the trustee can't make a response.
I don't even, I'm not an attorney, I don't even know how to phrase it like that, I'm not in court. I guess we are, are we in court now?
Are you making a comment or asking a question?
We need to bring an attorney in here, maybe the Illinois Attorney General should be aware of this. I'm not sure what to see right now, I'm not too sure anybody knows what to say. You've done your job.
Has he skipped? He should have been skipped, right?
I just wanted to say, would you dis resolve this, you know, way right here?
You have some names in the record.
Your name, please.
Andrew Johnson.
Yeah, if you're gonna turn your one.
If the person would dis resolve, whoever it is in the audience, if they want to say, for instance, well, I am displeased about the information, you know, that I received about whatever, you know, and, you know, could someone respond to what I'm displeased about? Now, I don't know what to do, you know, but, period. So it's making a comment, saying that I am displeased about, you know, whatever, and then any of the trustees can respond to it, versus interrogating, you know, one trustee or anybody, you know, like that.
One man's interrogation is another man's question.
I'm asking, isn't that sufficient, would that cover both ends? You make a comment, you commented displeased about whatever, and then the trustees can respond to it. How about?
Okay, well, if the comments were made or whatever.
Why's he responding, Jim? Why's he responding, Jim?
Go ahead. I was, I had the, go ahead.
Okay, so, so you're saying that someone made a comment at the trustee, I mean, if the board would respond to the comment as opposed to being a question?
Right, right, right.
Jerry Hunter, one forty-one, forty-seven, Green Bay. Well, one of the issues is if they're going to stifle you asking questions right here, and say you have to ask after the meeting, what if you walk through that door and you don't make yourself available? We don't have phone numbers, we don't have email addresses, we have no way to talk to any of the trustees. Everything is screened through the clerk's office. If you wanted to talk to a trustee about an issue, it's going to go from inside that clerk's office, and they're going to write a complaint form, it's going to go to the mayor first. So you're not even able to talk to any of the trustees if you wanted to do it, and you wanted to do it and be, and wanted to do it where the mayor didn't know about it, unless you didn't want him to realize you were talking to a trustee about something. Also, the company, I don't know if it passed or not for the building permit, but the company that's going to be cleaning the grease, what I'd like to say is, I think you guys should have researched it a little better, maybe checked where they were from, make sure they didn't file for bankruptcy, find out why they want to come to Burnham, because just to the north of that company, we allowed a company to come in here, we gave them a building permit, they dumped all sorts of garbage, and they ruined the business there, and now it's a brownfield, and it's polluted. It also has a big old hill with slag on it that is pollution, and the EPA doesn't want anybody walking in. Who's, who's going to be responsible for it? The Village of Burnham was responsible to clean it up. So I think before you allow companies to come in, you need to research it. We don't know whether there's going to be any byproducts from grease, we don't know if they're going to be pouring it down the sewers, and they're going to plug up the sewers, we don't know if they need a triple garage basin, we don't know if our building inspector is going to go there and make sure that he has the proper equipment, just like there's a company over on one hundred and thirty-eighth that makes tamales. That company was allowed to come in, and they were allowed to start their business, but they didn't have the proper grease traps. What happens, all that grease, all that sludge got into the sewer system, it blocked up the sewer system over and over and over, and the village spent thousands of dollars, and I'm talking not one or two thousand, I'm talking ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, cleaning that sewer right there, because that company decided that they didn't need to have the right equipment, and our building department didn't catch it, and we were just eager to give them a building permit.
Did you say something, we did do research on the company?
Pardon me?
We did do the research on that company?
No, nobody does the research.
Yes, I did.
Are you talking about the company over here? Or are you talking about the company?
The one that's coming in, that you're talking about, who you just approved at the last meeting.
You did?
Yes.
Let me ask you, did you happen to check? Because it looks, it looks like they're a large company, and they might do this in other states possibly? Did you check and maybe call one of those other companies to see if their neighbors had any kind of problems with it or anything like that?
I do the research, and I make sure.
What kind of research did you do? I'm not allowed to ask a question. Can you tell us what kind of research you've done? I'm just curious, that's all.
They haven't had any, any issues in the past.
According to who?
According to whatever's in the books.
What books?
Law.
Law?
Ed Brock, I'm just here opposing the water rate increase and sewer rate outrageously, four hundred percent is what I understand it is, and I'm here to say that last, the minutes last meeting should have read that you said, well, we give discounts, senior discounts to other, like the, for the stickers, I would give up my senior discount on the sticker to get a senior discount on my water bill if it's going to go that way. I'm just making that comment to put that before the board and see what you can do about that.
You do.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Well, I'd like to say this, for, you know, for the people who have been getting the senior discount, I mean, I'll be a senior in two years, and I'll never get it. I'll never get it.
Wow.
You don't need it.
And for the grease being in the sewers, you know, we've had people that's been in charge of that, and I don't ever recall anyone telling me to put an excessive, I mean, excessive amount of grease in.
I'll get you the email, I'll bring it next time. You gotta remember things, Mayor.
Okay. Time is up, time is up, thank you. Is anyone else on this side?
Nothing, what you tell, I...
Is anyone else on this side?
Yes, I do.
No, you've already spoken.
I haven't spoken for three minutes, you're going to cut me off even on that? Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to be respectful.
I mean, you already spoke, right?
I didn't get a chance to say anything.
You cut off at three minutes.
The only point I'm going to make is, for all you people here, I've done some numbers, even based on the new eleven dollars per thousand for water, one dollar for sewer, ten dollars surtax, which is mind-boggling too, John Cap told me after the meeting last week that it was for maintenance and cleaning of the sewers. Is that not being done now? Having said that.
It's not.
According to your guys' numbers, including the seventeen forty-five for the garbage, the average family in your paperwork, the average family which consists of three people in the fam, three people in a household, use, I'm not going to bore you with some numbers, but basically, it amounts to, you're going to be paying four hundred and seventy-eight dollars every three months. You're going to be billed monthly, but it's going to amount to four seventy-eight. That's every three months, that's what it is right now. Who knows what, I can't ask any more questions, but.
My numbers are wrong.
Well, this is the current numbers that you've given us, even with the...
Those are wrong.
I mean, that is not true, and that will be, um...
That's not, what part of that is not true?
At a different time, we will get into details about that, but we will not do it tonight, but everyone will get a full, explicit understanding as to what the cost will be.
It'll be mailed to our mailbox?
Is anyone else on this side? Is anyone on this side?
Oh, I just want, I want, Joe Nubaner, one thirty-nine, ten minutes. I just wanted to follow with Cap on the last meeting, I think George asked a question about the contracts for the water that was being used.
She's asking him a question.
I don't have a contract with me, but we did, we did set that price.
What's the difference between your interrogation and that interrogation?
Is anyone else?
And also, okay, my three minutes now, and about, I don't understand, how could you be billed three thousand gallons if you only use a thousand gallons of water? Okay, we sat the price increase for the water.
I mean, as I said.
Why would you have to be billed, I mean, why would you pay for what you don't use?
Right, you're doing it now, though, you're paying for ten thousand a quarter.
That's reasonable, we're going to amend and get the new meters and stuff and whatnot, and we will explain that.
Right, because I understand it just doesn't make, especially like you say, for seniors, like in your case, if you didn't get it, you might be compensated more so than some of the other seniors.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeanette Lipinski, one forty-one, twenty-one, South Green Bay Avenue.
And for the record, for the record, it is not required, you know, for you to give your address, you just need to stand up and give your name, and if you want to give your address, you can.
Okay.
But by state law, we cannot ask you to give your address.
Okay, that's good to know.
Am I allowed to give my address?
He was talking to somebody.
You don't have to, anyone, we stated that years ago, you don't have to by law, anyone to give your address.
My comment is this, I've been in, back in Burnham since December twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven, and since I've been here, I was disabled, became disabled by the negligence of this police department in the village through lack of garage alley lighting. My mother has been murdered. I have been arrested twice falsely. I have been stalked by neighbors.
So if I didn't tell them.
I have not been answered, the village clerk, Luz, will refuse to call me when I have asked to talk with her several times. I have not had my FOIA's requested since two thousand and fifteen answered, and there's many more, and I have asked you, Mayor, and sent you emails to help save my mother's life, and you have not contacted me back. And that's my comment for now.
Well, I just basically like to say that those claims are not true, some of those issues are involved with the state attorney's office, and the state attorney, you know, has more authority than we do, and once it goes to them, then it's out of the municipality's hands, so, thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes, see me here. You said there's going to be the need for water meters. Now, during this process, has there been open bidding that we are aware for the water meters?
Not yet, but that will, that will be open bid.
It will be open bid, okay. Another question is this, who stands to profit for this?
Nobody.
Nobody?
Nobody.
The village, big time, big time.
No, that's no problem.
Okay.
And that will be appropriately explained to you.
I can show it to you at the end of the meeting if you'd like to say it.
It's not true.
Okay. All right, and another thing, as far as the water bill itself, how much more are our suppliers going to be paying for their water bill? Our is going to go up, is theirs going to go up? The one that we get water from?
Well, they go up all the time, and that's one of the reasons that we...
Is it going to be competitive for what we're paying? Is it going to be managed?
That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons that we, you know, have kind of gotten in the hole, because we have not raised, I would be of course on it, but, but we will go with that one too as well.
Okay, one last final question. Is there a possibility for us to have our own water line instead of piping it in for someone else? I mean, going to build a bike trail to the tune of what, a million dollars? Why can't we use that money to build our own water supply? Our own water tower?
Well, that is, I mean, that is a good question, but there's no comparison between having a bike path put up and, and the water, I mean, that would be two different sources of revenue. You cannot take federal funds and use it, you know, for local municipality unit, and especially, and especially for a department that generates revenue. Water department, or the owner department, within the Village of Burnham that actually generates revenue, cannot get any funding for that.
Okay, well, TIPS fund couldn't even be involved in that, I'm quite sure, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lillian Hunter, and I just wanted to know, why is it okay that he asked three questions, she asked two questions, but he couldn't ask one or two?
Good question.
I think it was the time, it wasn't the number of questions.
What time, how was I off?
No, you said none of us can ask questions.
Mr. Polk, you're on video here, buddy.
You just want him to ask three questions, and her two.
Okay.
Good question.
You're just digging yourself in for it.
If I miss having a comment, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Just as well.
You need a motion to close?
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion to propose a...
We'll have to have meetings without that.
The clerk take a role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Public Works has been doing some cleanup and construction, picking up litter and stuff, and we ask that you see any litter and stuff in front of your hallway on your curb, if you would pick it up, we would greatly appreciate that, that would help keep that from getting down in the sewers, but that's also created the problem. We had a water main break on Saginaw on Saturday night, and, you know, so Wayne called me, and I called Brandon, and this man had called Wayne, so we got that thing together, so, I know, so that was the situation there, you know, so we constantly, I mean, working to, you know, keep things afloat in the Village of Burnham, and like I've said in one of the previous meetings before, that people still have confidence in your town, and people are invested in running this town, and they're buying properties, and they're rehabbing them, and, and we are going to work to bring another business to in town, and all businesses we can get into town, and that would lower the taxes, and then that would help, that would help our...
We'll lower taxes.
Okay.
We've had ten times as many businesses shut down that have opened here, I could name them.
At this time, we would hear report from clerk Luz.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
United Way is having on April twenty-fifth, April Food Day. Their, my office will be collecting any unopened, non-expire cans and boxes of food, for example, fruit and vegetable juice, bagged rice and beans, canned fruits, vegetables, cereal, oatmeal, granola bar, chips, cookies, and crackers, canned meats and stews, peanut butter and jelly, infant supplies, baby food, formula diapers, laundry detergent, toiletries like soap, shampoo, conditioner, deodorant, toothpaste, and feminine products. So if anyone would like to donate, and taking donations through April twentieth, April twenty-fifth is the day that will bring in these donated items, and that's all we have.
Thank you, clerk, for that report. Your information, Public Educate, and Health Safety and Welfare, trustee Greer.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I don't have too much this evening, just want to remind everyone that Thornton Township has a senior transportation program. The transportation program operates on a curve-to-curve service within the township for persons age sixty and over. Service is available from eight AM to five fifteen PM, Monday to Friday, and it meets all American with a disability requirements. Transportation is provided to any point within the township and designated medical facilities only. Appointments are made on a first-come, first-served basis. Three business days advance notice for rides is appreciated. Any change to your appointment must be made through the township dispatcher. Each one-way ride is given for a suggested donation of one dollar. So if you know of anyone that is in need of this service, it is a good service, you can call the township, seven oh eight, three three nine, nine nine eight oh, and I would be more than happy to give you a copy of the flyer if you need. And again, if you have, know of a family that is in need, or that has a need, some of our families are in between services, are in between jobs, so if you know of a family that has a need, if you know of a child that has a need, someone that needs, it could be shoes, it could be clothing, it could be school supplies, please call, and you can talk to, ask for myself. If I am not in the office, please leave your number, and I'll be more than happy to call you back. And the people that's on my committee is trustee Richardson and trustee Travis, so you can call either one of us, and we will get back with you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for your report, and that information, Public Works and Building, trustee Claybrook?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works has been doing general cleanup throughout the village, and when it snows, they put salt down and things like that, and also, we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Illinois Councilman Management for the removal of cottonwood trees in Powderhorn Lake. It's the, they were tall trees that die and get indestructible, overhanging trees, and they'll be replaced with native grass and native flowers, and this project should be, it should be started within the next several weeks, and it actually, the...
It's in progress now, is it?
It's in progress now, and the area is adjacent to Burnham Avenue, approximately between the parking lot and Brainerd Avenue, and you'll definitely notice the difference when they finish.
Was that the golf course you're talking about? You said Powderhorn?
Powderhorn Lake. It's forest preserve.
Forest preserve.
Why would we need to grant to cut forest preserve trees?
You kind of gave us the address of the golf course.
Adjacent to, so...
That'd be on the north side.
Right.
Well, the north side of Burnham.
Right.
Because there's a lot of big cottonwoods along the golf course fence, you know, Burnham Avenue, and it probably need to be addressed, right, there's some real big ones.
I kind of like trees. I hate seeing where trees get cut down. We've been on a rampage for years cutting down trees. They'll be replaced with native grass and flowers and trees, now, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, trustee Tambrus, for your report.
Trees are making big money. John? John, I'll talk to you after the meeting if you're still willing to ask me whatever you have to.
They weren't interrogating, sure, not a problem, thank you.
Let me coordinate with our motion in plan, and trustee Garcia?
I don't have any questions.
Trustee Garcia, trustee Cap?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you have a question, you can let us know.
I have quite a few, thank you. Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the approval of commercial premium finance agreement for the insurance renewal quote from QBE Specialty Insurance Company for law enforcement liability insurance, the total premium amount of fifty thousand fifty-one dollars and a tax of twenty-two hundred and two dollars, which is a total of fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars, a down payment of fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents, and the amount financed remaining is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents at a rate of seven point three percent. Monthly payments of four thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-one cents. First installment is February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal and finance agreement.
Are there any questions from the trustee party?
Go ahead, somebody asked for what it cost last year.
You gave them that, didn't you?
That's why I'm watching that answer.
Okay.
Anybody curious?
A couple of them went down, some of them went up. I believe we are ahead on the...
What did it cost last year?
That one went down seventeen cents, I mean seventeen dollars, seventeen dollars. That one was pretty close to the same. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the quote from commercial premium finance agreement for the insurance renewal quote from QBE Specialty Insurance Company for law enforcement liability insurance, total premium amount of fifty thousand fifty-one dollars and a tax of two thousand two hundred and two dollars, which is a total of fifty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars, a down payment of fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents, and the amount financed remaining is thirty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents at a rate of seven point three percent. Monthly payments of four thousand three hundred and four dollars and ninety-one cents. First installment, February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal and finance agreement.
Okay, trustee Cap is making a motion, because we have a second to approve this law enforcement liability insurance for the amount that he's given. Think we have a second?
A second.
A second by trustee Claybrook, the clerk take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.[1705.12]
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, proceed.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the approval of the insurance renewal of Hudson Insurance Company slash Hudson Excess Insurance Company. The total premium amount is forty-nine thousand sixteen dollars for the general liability, automotive, and property. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal.
Do you make the motions?
No, I have, uh, discussion. This one went down a little bit, by the way.
How much did they go down?
Uh, about just a little under six thousand.
Anybody have any questions after? Does he have a second then? So you make the motion?
I make a motion on the approval of the insurance renewal of Hudson Insurance Company slash Hudson Excess Insurance Company. The total premium amount of forty-nine thousand sixteen dollars for general liability, automotive, and property. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal.
So there's a motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve the amount of forty-nine thousand sixteen dollars for Hudson Insurance Company. Do we need a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Richardson, will the clerk take the roll, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, proceed.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the approval of the insurance renewal of Allied World Insurance Company in the total premium amount of two thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars for Cyber, for Cyber. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal.
Are there any questions?
Of course.
Any questions?
They already talked about it back there.
That one stayed the same, by the way. So I make a motion to approve the insurance renewal of Allied World Insurance Company in the total premium amount of two thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars for Cyber. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance renewal.
A motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve the Allied World Insurance Company, two thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Do we need a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Claybrook, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, proceed.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the approval of the insurance renewal of Western World Insurance Company in the total premium amount of fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars for the public officials liability. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance quote.
Are there any questions, the other? Any questions?
That one stayed the same, your information.
Would you make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the insurance renewal of Western World Insurance Company in the total premium amount of fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars for the public officials liability. The authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance quote.
A motion on the floor has been made by trustee Cap to approve the Western World Life Insurance Company for a premium fifty thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Do we need a second, please?
Second.
A second by trustee Garcia, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer? Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, thank you. Proceed.
Last one. Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the approval of the insurance quote of IPRF Company in the total premium amount of eighty-one thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars with a monthly payment for workers' compensation plus administration fee of three percent, which is twenty-four hundred and fifty-seven dollars with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc. and on the authorization of the village clerk to sign said insurance quote.
Any questions?
We've got so many attorneys and insurance companies. That one went down.
Any questions? Trustee Cap, would you make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the insurance quote of IPRF Company in the total premium amount of eighty-one thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars with a monthly payment for workers' compensation plus administration fee of three percent, which is twenty-four hundred and fifty-seven dollars with the Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc. and on the authorization...
A motion on the floor by trustee Cap to approve this amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars with, uh, A.J. Gallagher Risk Management for three percent of each, which is twenty-four fifty-seven a month. So, uh, we can have a second, please.
Second.
A second by trustee Richardson, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And that's all.
Motion passed. As you can see, it's very expensive to cover these costs. We have to have the insurance to cover the employees. We have to have the insurance to cover the assets and allow villagers of the village, and it is very, very expensive. And the public utilities are trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Come with Edison has grant money to help residents with their electric bills. You can pop the number on your bill, and they can, uh, promote you to, uh, who you need to speak with to apply for this assistance.
And would you also follow up and see if they, what they wanted to come out to the community, so we could set up a meeting, and have the people to come there, and maybe, you could do that. All right, thank you.
That's it.
Any water main breaks or anything like that? Nothing?
Just the one that the mayor mentioned earlier.
About the meeting for the water. Are they gonna still have a, uh, meeting, universal meeting at the school or something? To inform the people of the water increase?
Um, is there anything on the Parks and Recreation? Uh, trustee, does anybody have anything to state on that? Or any...
I, I, I could speak, uh, say one thing. Um, I believe the date is February twenty-first. They're having, uh, the... Kamen Memorial Park District is having a father-daughter dance. I have flyers, I'll put them in the best review, but, um, I think that is the twenty-first of February. I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you, trustee. Any, um, presentation of petitions? And a communication of a memorial, rest of my city. I would ask for moments of silence for Justice William Cousin, you know, who passed away a few days ago, and he was a member of the Illinois Supreme Court. I would also ask for moments of silence for the former mayor of Robin, Irene Brody, who also passed away.
And then Brody's...
Okay, thank you. Is there any unfinished business?
Brody's search for cranberries back there.
On the new business, would you take that, trustee Greer?
Discussion, discussion of, consideration of and taking action, approved or not approved, requires that all village of Burnham employees, including full and part-time members of the village of Burnham Police Department and all members of the village of Burnham Fire Department, individuals on the police pension board, and fire and police board members, take the training of sexual harassment.
Okay, are there any questions, comments on that? And take the next one, trustee.
Proclamation for the village of Burnham.
Okay, um, I'm trying to remember what to say. Um, we need to make a motion to, uh, to...
I make a motion that the village of Burnham employees, including the full and part-time members of the village of Burnham Police Department and all members of the village of Burnham Fire Department,
Detective.
Individuals on the police pension board and fire and police board members take the training of, on sexual harassment.
So you asked for a motion to approve, as so everybody would require to...
Absolutely, yes.
A motion on the floor by trustee Greer to approve, to approve the harassment.
Jerry, why do they have to be trained?
Training is sexual harassment.
A bunch of perverts.
A second. A second by trustee Cap, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
You're a voting pervert.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do you have a proclamation? Proclamation for the village of Burnham School Choice Week, will be read by the court.
Proclamation for village of Burnham School Choice Week. Whereas all children in the village of Burnham should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the village of Burnham recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the village of Burnham to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the village of Burnham, and whereas the village of Burnham is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrance of our community, and whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to ra- raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. And now, therefore, Mayor Robert E. Polk do hereby recognize this January twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, as the village of Burnham School Choice Week, and he calls it this ob- observation, observance to the potential of all citizens.
Speaking of...
At this time, I want to make a motion to, uh, we're gonna have to change the order. I'm gonna make, um, uh, I'm gonna ask for the board to make, uh, a motion that we change the order of business. We have to go into executive session. Um, we will do that in order, when we have issues to discuss for executive session purposes. We cannot discuss them in public, but we have to go, we have to go into conference room to do that. That's our state, our state law, and we will abide by that law.
You just told him, yeah.
I request closed section, which is five Illinois Complied Statute one twenty slash two, section twenty-one, discussion of minutes lawfully closed, whether for the purposes of approval of the minutes or the semi-annual review of the minutes. Five Illinois Complied Statutes of one twenty slash two C. Eleven litigation, when action against a fecking on behalf of the village have been filed or is pending before court on administrative trial, you know, when the board finds the action is probable or imminent. This pertaining to Mr. Anton Russell. The next one is the Illinois Complied Statute one twenty slash two C. One, the informant, the employment, a conversation, dissonance, performance, or dismissal of specific employee of the public body or the league council. So I will ask for motion, I mean, to suspend the regular, the order of business.
We're gonna fire this woman.
At this time.
Motion to suspend the order of business.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor by trustee Garcia to suspend the regular order of business section. A second by trustee Cap, will the clerk take the roll?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
A motion passed, now I'd like to make a motion, if we go into executive session. You ever need a motion, go into executive session?
I'll make a motion, then we go into executive session.
A motion on the floor by trustee Cap, if we go into executive session, so we have a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Claybrook.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
A motion called, we have to go into executive session at this time, and we will come back and reconvene in the meeting, and then we will close. But you're here, you're seated, and if not, we will...